Alright, everyone, it's trying to, Sean, is there anyone on Zoom? Alright, anyone that's on Zoom, we made an executive decision to delay the meeting so that we could see the comet and we did. Or at least, most of us imagine we did. We did see it, right guys? Yeah. We have photographic proof. Alright. So, Rocky asked me to do a constellation presentation. And I've been a member for a little over six years. I don't remember anyone talking about the constellation Sculptra. So I thought I'd do that. And in fact, I made the decision early in the week and when I was out here Thursday night observing, not just the sky, but also the aurora, which is beautiful. I took some images and I was looking at Sculptra to make sure we can see things. Alright, so. So you can see that Sculptra, it doesn't show up on there, okay. Sculptra is a, doesn't show the mouse there either, alright. Sculptra is a constellation in, below the celestial equator. Below Cetus and Aquarius. But we can see it well because we have a wonderful low southern horizon. And so I, you'll see, I took an image of one of the objects in Sculptra and they're very, very easily visible. Now, I think it's going to be heard a little bit tonight because of the Gibbous moon, but we'll see what happens. Alright. So, the French astronomer Nicolas Louis de la Salle, he first put forth the idea for the constellation Sculptra. And he called it Atelier de Sculptra, which means it's a sculptor studio. And when I show you the picture again, going back, I don't know how he saw a sculptor studio in this thing. But apparently he did. I just see a little hook. But there's 56 stars and maybe he had the imagination. It wasn't just the sculptor himself, it was the sculptor with a table and with a bust on it, and that's what he saw. I don't know what he was drinking that night, but that's what he saw, okay? So. The name was shortened to Sculptra in the late, early, late to early 19th century. There are 56 stars, as I said, but none brighter than third magnitude. But interestingly, although it contains no Messier objects, it does contain a lot of deep sky objects that are brighter than eighth magnitude. Including the Sculptor Dwarf Galaxy, which is at 10th magnitude. Eight of these objects in there can be seen with binoculars. Also, the South Galactic Pole is located in the middle of Sculptra. Alright, little thing people may not know. So here's one of the objects. It's a beautiful globular cluster, N C 288. And it's located 29,000 light-years from Earth. I saw it through binoculars and I saw it through my eight-inch telescope very nicely. And it has a three-minute-of-arc dense core surrounded by a more irregular halo, if you will, that goes out to nine to 10 minutes. So it's not small. Alright. This one, NGC 55, is magnitude eight. I picked it up in binoculars and it was a beautiful sight in my telescope. It's an edge-on galaxy. It has many regions, as you can see in the red there, of active star formation. It's called the Pearls, the String of Pearls Galaxy. And the pearls are actually very highly active hydrogen alpha regions with a lot of star. Some people are trying to say it should be a starburst galaxy, but probably not. NGC 300 is very similar in size and shape to M 33. It's 6 million light-years from Earth, whereas M 33 is about 3 million light-years away. So it looks smaller, but it's pretty bright. And it's magnitude eight, and it's the second brightest star, I mean galaxy, in the Sculptor group. And it's one of the closest groups to us, closer than the 81 and 82 group. This is a pretty one. NGC 7793, magnitude 93. And it has rich nebula that exhibit high rate of star formation. So it is also one that people are right on the edge of it being a starburst gal. To me, it looks like a starburst galaxy. Look at all those hydrogen alpha areas. Alright. NGC 253 is the largest of the galaxies, although it's not the brightest, magnitude eight. And it is an intermediate spiral, not quite edge-on. And it is classified as a starburst galaxy. Now, you're wondering, can I really see these things? What can I observe? So on Thursday night, I took a picture of NGC 253 with my eight-inch telescope. This is only two hours of data, but I thought it gave me a pretty good image. And I also started an image of the Dwarf Galaxy and then unfortunately clouds started coming. Around around 2:30, so I hit the hay. Alright. So that's the Sculptor Dwarf Galaxy. It's about 290,000 light-years from Earth, has a mass of 30 million solar masses, so it's really a kind of a wimpy galaxy. But it has a very, all the stars have very low high-element content, about 4% of what the Milky Way has. So people study this one because it's very reminiscent of the metal poor galaxies that first formed. There were several different ways that galaxies formed, what they call from top down, where there was this big cloud and they started breaking up and forming galaxies. But most of them, you know, that was very rare, actually. Most of it was like these small little pockets that then started to merge. So this made one of these small little pockets that was right around the Milky Way and eventually got captured by us. So it's a very old stars and very mineral poor. So it's a very interesting galaxy to look at. So, spend some time observing Sculptra because we have a great southern exposure. I don't know if anyone ever has done it besides me. I know Jim did. We saw Omega Centauri. Jim, you photographed it, didn't you? Omega Centauri? Yeah, he photographed it, I observed it. So we can get really down low. It's kind of a mini compact galaxy season. There are 105 galaxies in Sculptra. 105. And many of them can be seen with an eight-inch telescope, especially with a camera. It has also some interesting double stars. I won't name all of them here, but there's about four multiple-star systems, some with five to six stars, and they're very colorful. Alright? So, and also, six stars in Sculptra have exoplanets that can be observed with our RRT if you want to play with it. Alright, thank you. Any questions? I can't remember. I think they're about 90,000 light-years away, something like that. Yeah, they're closer in, but they're, they estimate that the Milky Way has about 50 dwarf galaxies orbiting us somehow. Yeah. So, we sucked up a bunch of them over the years. The next big event, of course, is the Andromeda Milky Way merger, but we won't be here for that. Maybe. Maybe not. Probably will be. It'll be a red giant, getting, or ready to become a red giant in about 3 billion years. Alright, anyone else? Questions? Comments? Well, tonight, I'm gonna, I don't know if I'll be able to see anything. I set my telescope up to look at some of the objects with EAA, so you're welcome to come by.
Okay. Um, so, about a, I guess last Christmas, I ordered a Seestar. I had, I had been working with the RRO RRT, but it had problems. And I've got a lot of, I got a lot of images with the RRO RRT before it went down, but then I saw, somebody, I think Chris Thodey told me about the Seestar. Maybe somebody else, but anyway, I went ahead and ordered one, got it in about December 31st. So I've been playing with it for about nine months now. And so I wanted to talk about smart telescopes in general. And these are, these are the five main ones right now. And I'm sure in the next year or two, there'll be more. I know Seestar is coming out with a 30-millimeter. This is a 50-millimeter, so they're kind of competing with Dwarf. The one down right here. And I'll tell you a little bit about that. That's really an interesting telescope. So, features of smart telescopes are good optics. Most of them have our triplets, like the Seestars and Afrochromatic. Cutting-edge imaging technology with good chips and they're engineered together, everything to be together. They're Wi-Fi, so they're controlled using a phone app. No eyepiece, except for the original version of the Unistellar, which is like that one, but that one doesn't have the eyepiece. They go to with GPS for polar line, automatic polar line. So. And what like, when you set it up and you tell it to go find something, if it's dark, it wasn't dark tonight. I tried to find the comet. It wasn't dark enough. But what it'll do is it'll go up and get close to it, and then it'll plate solve, and then it'll move to it, and then it's adjusted. It's, it'll find pretty much anything else from then on. But basically, it just takes a few minutes once you get started. You have to do a couple of things. You have to, it goes through a taking some dark frames. And as long as you stay, it's got a 10-second 10-second imaging. And just, and what it does is it continually stacks those 10-second imaging. But it yeah, I forgot where I was. Anyway, it plate solves and then oh, I know, after it does that, then you need to focus it. You have to go through autofocus. It's got an autofocuser on it. Okay, why are they gaining popularity? They make astronomy and astrophotography accessible to anyone with a phone or a tablet. So they're technical and, and people like that, no need to know anything about astronomy, but they will make you want to learn more about astronomy. One thing that's neat is they cut through city lights and moonlight with filters. And so I have no problem in Boardle 5 taking a lot of images. And I know, I don't know if you've seen Guev or Quev on YouTube, but he's in the middle of Tokyo and he takes a lot of images, not with the Seestar, but with his stuff. But you can do a lot of imaging where you can't do, where you can't do it with, with the eye. Highly portable, easy setup. It weighs, it weighs about six pounds in the case. And it's got the, I'm using my own tripod. But it comes with a short tripod that's about twice that tall, and it works just fine. It's a very good tripod. It's carbon fiber. But I like, I like being able to stand up and do it. Set it up. Good for star parties. You can kind of share stuff around. We'll talk more about that. Matt Christensen gave me a write-up on what he does for star parties. You can dive deep into faint star fields, like, you know, I used to get out in my backyard and find Pluto and it was right at 14th magnitude and it was pretty difficult. And that was when it was darker. That was 20 years ago, or when I was out in the country with a 10-inch. It's amazing what this little 50-millimeter will go in deeper than that. It'll get down to at least 15. 15th magnitude. And so that makes it good for astronomical research. And there's a lot of astronomical research being done with little thing like this. Got the wrong thing in my hand. And here's just kind of a summary of them. The Seestar costs $499, it's got an aperture of 50 millimeters. It's an F5. The field of view, which is, there's a lot of difference here in these, is 1.28 degrees by 0.73 degrees. And weight with tripod is 5.5 pounds. In the case, it's 6.5 pounds. The Unistellar, which is what Darcy brought tonight. Okay, that's what this, that's what I've got up here. So it's 114, it costs, now, I don't know what, they've gone down, I think, with competition, but $1,800 now, 114-millimeter aperture, 450-millimeter focal length. Point, smaller, 0.556 by 0.56, and 14.3 pounds with tripod. And the Seestar is not very good for planets. It's not good at all. It's really good on the moon and the sun. But I'd say that, I bet the Unistellar is pretty good with planets, because it's got the focal length and smaller field of view. Unistellar Odyssey is another version that's a yeah, I think he's got a, he might, yeah. I think his is 114 millimeters too. But I'm not sure. You may be right. But anyway. It's 85 millimeters and almost, in a rectangular field of view, at 0.57 by 0.75. So it's about, weighs about the same. Y'all probably heard of the Celestron Origin and it's, of course, later. It's got some features that these others don't. But it's like $4,000, it's got a six-inch aperture, 152 millimeters. F 2.2, it's a, it's a Raza telescope, F 2.2 telescope. And it's got a field of view about, pretty close to the Seestar, 1.27 by 0.85. It weighs 42 pounds with the, with the whole thing. And it's on a Celestron Evolution mount. All these are Altasma, except for the Dwarf III. The Dwarf III is a, is a 35-millimeter aperture, and this is, this is new. They had a Dwarf II, and I think it was 30 millimeters. And it was $499, so the Dwarf III is $499. And it's got an F 4.3 or 150-millimeter focal length. It's got a big field of view, so it'll take in the Andromeda Nebula and probably the North American and maybe the whole veil. I don't know if, I don't think it'll do the whole veil, but close. It only weighs, it weighs less than three pounds. What, this one's really interesting, because it's got, it's got a lot smaller aperture. But the the chip in it's like four times as sensitive as the Seestar. Four times the resolution. So it, the Seestar take very similar images when you, when you, when you dive down into them as far as resolution. But anyway, the Dwarf III is very interesting. And another one is the Vionis Vesper, and it's probably the I think it's the neatest looking, that's this, this one on the bottom here. It's $1,700, it's got the same as the, about the same as the Seestar as far as the field of view and the focal length. And it weighs about 10 pounds. I think it's probably got a little more resolution than the Seestar, but I don't know for sure. Okay, these are some images I took with the Seestar. And I've not, I've gone into doing them for AstroLeague programs mostly. So, and I took all three of these at the star party. Well, I didn't take the Helix Nebula. I took an M16 and M22 at the star party up on the Buffalo. And then the Helix I took at home, and it's 17 minutes. But you can see, you can get pretty good images. And these are without processing. These are, I did do some brightening. I used this is Google Slides and I used Google Slides brightening, so I didn't go to another program or anything. And here's a, here's a couple more Seestar images that I took. This crystal ball was one of my first ones. January 11th. So that, I learned how to use it. First night, I got some good images. One of them I did and I don't have it here is the Horsehead. I started out with that. These are some somebody else took with the Seestar and they probably did, you know, two or three hours worth of images and use Pixensight or something like that. But you can get pretty good results with the Seestar. Images with, that you get on your phone are all live view and saved to the phone. But what it also saves to the Seestar memory, and you have to go into the Seestar to get it, is it saves a fit image of the stacked images. A single-fit image, a high-quality JPG image that is real good and easy to manipulate in Photoshop. And it doesn't have verbiage at the bottom. You can see these original Seestar images. They all have how much time, what it is, and the date, which is kind of nice. But the ones with that you get out of the thing, they have, they tell, you know, you, like that stacked 101 images. I think that's the Helix Nebula, 10 seconds, used IR cut. I probably should have used my duo. It also has a duo band and probably should have used the duo band on it. And the date. And so that's, that was the ASI, that was what, how it was labeled. So the ones in the computer, in the Seestar, come out and tell you what they are. When you're doing live view, and all of them are live view. But you can also save every, every 10-second image, so you can come back and stack every, stack them just like you would any, any other thing. Using DSS or something like that. And at Seestar, it'll also take 20 and 30-second images. The, I've tried them and they don't work quite, they haven't worked as good for me. I haven't experimented much with them, because I've always had pretty good luck with the 10s, but you can take 20 and 30 seconds. To set it up, it, first of all, it's an Altas mount. You set it up by leveling the tripod, screw the Seestar onto the tripod. Turn the Seestar on and it beeps. Start up the Seestar app in your phone, connect your phone to the Seestar Wi-Fi. Search for a bright star first, like Altair Deneb or something like that. And if it's dark, if it misses, it'll plate solve and it'll move right to it. And then when it finds it, then you run your autofocus. You can do it automatically, but if you do that, then it tries to autofocus every time you find a new object. So I've got that turned off and I do it manually. Proceed to your first object. Before it takes it, it takes 10 dark frames, the same as your, your 10, 20, or 30 seconds. And if you change from 10 to 20, it'll take more dark frames before you, before it starts taking them. Then it'll start imaging and stacking. And I'm giving you this on Seestar, because that's what I know about, but I'm assuming and I know about some of them, but, but most of them will have similar features. But it's got a built-in dew heater that you can turn on if it's dewy. Built-in autofocus, built-in IR cut filter. And a built-in LP filter, which is a duo-band HF and O3 filter for reflection and emission nebula. And it'll either be one of those two all the time. Can't turn off the IR cut. Six-hour battery life. It's got a solar filter included with it in the case. They've got a new feature, and that's how I tried to find the comet tonight. I went in and plugged in the coordinates. It's got, used to not be able to plug in coordinates. And, but now they've got a new feature where you can, you can put your custom objects in and plug in the coordinates and go find it. So if it's not in the Seestar database, you can find it. And I've, I had to learn how to use that a lot for some of the, some of the programs I've worked on. There's a new feature that's in beta. I don't, they hadn't put it out for regular use yet, but it's a mosaic mode where it'll, it'll do like six images of the M 31, and then it'll, it'll paste them all together automatically. And it also takes very good pictures of the sun and the moon. And y'all have seen that one. I had to put though that one in there, where I caught an airplane. But the, this is just a photo of the sun. I took it at the, at Deep Sky Festival. But if you take an AVI video, you can take an AVI video and then you stack the video, you get a lot better resolution. You can get a lot better resolution on the sun. And the same with the moon. And that's just, that's actually, I think that's just one frame out of an AVI video of the moon. So these are some things you can do with a smart telescope. The AstroLeague observing programs have imaging options. Almost all the programs now, you can, you can do with imaging. As well as, and you get another certificate as an imaging certificate. And I think there's, when you get five specific and five additional, you can get a imaging pen and certificate for, for master imager. You can well, the, the imaging part would, like the measurer, you can, you can, you can get, image all the Messier objects and get a certificate. I wouldn't think that would be for imaging. That is for, for manual, yeah. I don't know. I'll have to look, because I've been using it for imaging. Images of Caldwell objects, lunar imaging, solar imaging, planetary nebula, many galaxy programs. And I've completed, and I've meant to bring my certificate and present it to myself, but I just got the planetary nebula observing program for imaging. I did it imaging. To your phone. Well. You have to send it. You have to, you have to go. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, or a tablet. Oh, it's Wi-Fi. They've got Bluetooth for iPhone, I think, but not for galaxies. Yeah, they, they opened it in the house too, but you can also link your phone right straight to your computer too. And use it like an observatory. Well, you I've not tried Pluto, but it does have that. It has a mark, it says mark, and then you can, it'll go in and tell you what, what NGC objects or whatever's in its database. You know, it'll tell you everything on the, on the, that's in the screen. Um. Yeah. Just a, yeah, it's just a video screen. You know, all our new mirrorless cameras are that way too. It's got a video screen in the eyepiece. And, you know, if you're interested in doing a AstroLeague program, I want, I'll tell you what I've started using is I started using PowerPoint or Google Slides. And posting my images on Google Slides, you keep up with it a whole lot better than any other way. You can put your notes on there and everything. I've done three or four programs that way now. That works real good. I've never tried it, but I assume you can. I think you can. Yeah, I know this one, that's one of the things they advertise. I've not tried it with the C star, but, but if you, everybody's on the same wifi channel, I, I would think you could, yeah. John, is Alan Lee on our? On our wifi? He checked in, can you tell?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
Oh, he's, are you here? I'm gonna go ahead and and let you go ahead. These are di, some different things you can do and Alan was gonna talk, he sent me some slides on exoplanets. Because you can actually do exoplanet research with C star. Okay, Alan.
Uh, okay, the, this is a relatively new program that's been going on, run by NASA. And some of the folks at JPL. That um are using citizen scientists to contribute on uh exoplanet research. And um we've, I've got a uh couple pictures up here. Uh that were taken with the cameras doing this exoplanet research. Um the one on the left, which is the, from our own uh RRT, the Remote Telescope. Um shows the uh, the transition, you can see uh, see how the. The um visible, visible light drops as a planet goes in front of their star. And that's how you get that dip, or they call it a curve. But uh it uh, you use software to analyze the data. Uh you take a bunch of images and uh run it through the uh data processing software. And it comes up with those uh neat curves. And from the curve, you can uh, the things they're interested in is uh the timing on the ingress and egress of the planet. And getting the midpoint of the trans, transition. And the other thing you can uh develop from this, just with our equipment, is the size of the planet. And um. They're all relative to the, the parent star. You get a ratio of the uh size of the planet uh or the, the diameter of the planet versus the diameter of the star. And that gives you that relationship. And they've got all these star diameters uh pretty well nailed down, so you can come up with fairly good estimates on star size. And um you can see the curve that we got with the RRT. And so far, I've uh, I've done about twenty-five. Um transits with the RRT. And unfortunately, I was bragging about how good it did on my last transit. And the next one I tried, the camera went to crap. So um that's, that's been the history with this camera we got. But anyhow, you're not stuck with the uh RRT, you can use the C star. You can see it uh, it develops the same type of curve. And uh you, you get the same data, you run it through the programs. Uh one program is run by uh, or developed by the NASA people. Uh there's another one from uh the Europeans that uh is called HOPS. And uh there's another very elaborate program called Astro Image J. Which uh is pretty difficult to uh, to get used to uh or figure out how to use it. Uh but anyhow, you can use uh C star to do these same curves. You see another uh, you got WASS thirty-three from uh uh Unistar Equinox. That uh was taken by one of the uh people in the program. So um almost any kind of camera. Uh can be used, it doesn't have to be very elaborate. And and you can see just from uh, from C star and Unistar. Uh those are not real elaborate cameras and you can get pretty good data coming off them. And um one side of, side point. If you uh, you submit this uh, the data that you get uh from the analysis, you submit that to AAVSO. Uh there's a special area where you submit your data. And uh if any researchers uh are studying a particular planetary system. If they use your data, you get listed as a co-author on any paper that they do. So you can get semi-famous just sitting in your backyard taking pictures of stars with planets going around them. But uh that's, that's pretty much the uh, uh what you can do with these uh neat little telescopes. And uh, I guess, I guess Rocky's gonna take that on as a project next.
No, probably not, but it's pretty interesting that you can, other people might want to. Thanks, Alan. Uh they're looking for near earth asteroids with uh some of these smart telescopes. Um I don't remember what, which one this one was. They have a uh, uh like a C star underground, there's a lot of. You get a lot of information on these, these extracurricular activities you can do with it. On uh uh Facebook uh and I'm sure other social media sites. You can also do a variable star photometry with these, these, these are a short period. Variable stars. EH Libra, ten to eleven hour run, point five mag amplitude, period of two hours. The period of the star is two hours. Um so. That's three things you can do, I'm sure there's other things too, but it's amazing what, what they're doing. And people are trying to see what they can do with it, I mean, they're uh trying to uh do as much as they can. Um Matthew sent me a thing on what he does with the star parties. And he's got a Unistellar like this one, only it's got the IP. Uh and I think it's the same as this one, a hundred and fourteen millimeter aperture, four and fifty millimeter focal length. Does yours take a square picture, I mean a rectangular picture? So yours is this one, I think the other one's square. But anyway, his main interest is in purchasing this smart scope was public outreach. For groups of pi, picture, he starts a session by talking about the smart scope, how it stacked. The go-to, the wifi, how it stacks and produces images better than displayed through a regular scope. Um his scope has a viewfinder and he thinks that's really a plus. Because everybody wants to walk through and look, look through the viewfinder, but then he shows it to him on his phone also. And also at the end of the session, he says he'll email them copies of the objects they looked at. Uh so he, he also discusses the technical specs, like the aperture, the focal length. All what, that is Altasma, probably has to, has to explain what that is. It's a Newtonian refract, reflector. Where most, you know, all the rest of them, I think are refractors, except the Origin, it's a, it's a reflector. He talks about the different types of objects, the uh different deep sky objects, the sun, the moon and the planets. And like I said, I think this one does a better job with planets. I, I use my C star to take a picture of Saturn at the Deep Sky. Dark Sky Festival and and all, it didn't show the uh. The wings, of course, right now Saturn's almost level. So it doesn't show a nice set of rings. But uh it, it did not show that in, in the C star and C, and it, because it was over, over saturated. I might have been able to get a better view on it, but it's, it's, it's good for deep sky objects, but not much for planets. So he's hoping he sparks some interest in, in astronomy and the devices he uses. So that's what, that's what he does with the uh, with the uh smart telescope. So that's all I've got, so any more questions or discussion? Two hundred and fifty millimeters, it's, yeah, fifty millimeter F five. Yeah. Oh, you, you can blow them up, but it's not very good. Yeah, C star's got a small chip. The Origin has the, the ability to, at some point, if they want to, they can change out the camera. They'll probably come up with different cameras to, to do it different. And then also where, where like the C star alternates filters, the uh. It's got two filters in it and you can put another filter on the outside. I've got, I haven't got a filter holder, but I had never used it. So if you want to put uh a hydrogen filter or something like that on it, you can, you can, you can do that. Yeah, it's got the uh, a duo band and a uh IR cut. It uses IR cut all the time unless you turn on the duo band. But the uh Origin actually has a filter drawer. And you have to put the filter, filter, the filter you want in it. So you can put any filters in it. One and a quarter or two inch. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Did y'all enjoy the Dark Sky Festival? How many, yeah, okay, well, I hope you're not worn out because we have one more star party for the year. And we need volunteers to go to Woolly Hollow. And Sean will be there, I will be there, Rocky, November second. Saturday, November second. If you can, if you can volunteer, bring your telescope. We need more volunteers and I'll let you sign your name on here. And also, we have had requests for uh Scout Troop sixteen Alma, Arkansas. They're working on their astronomy badge, they're gonna be at a campout on Mount Nebo, November fifteenth through eighteenth. They're looking for someone to share info, astronomy info, or to bring a good telescope and give a sky tour. If you could do that, uh let me know, the only problem is November fifteenth is a full moon. At the same time, that same date, November fifteenth. Uh the Cabot High School Astronomy Club is coming to the Pinnacle Mountain Arboretum. To do a night hike that's focused on astronomy and nocturnal animals. And they're asking if we could get a telescope volunteer or a, someone to answer questions or. Talk a little bit about astronomy. The uh Park Interpreter Matt Friant said he could use some help with that. And again, it's a full moon, so you could uh use international observe the moon materials that's online and have a simple map and show them the major features. And um. Yeah, you can't do that, but uh let me know if uh any of you would be interested in doing that. And I will pass that on to, to these scout groups in the high school club. So, thank you.
Well, just a few other things to announce, uh I want to thank Sean Hartley and his son Octavian. We uh were bequeathed, or I should say, they got a donation of a twelve inch Meade Smith uh Cassigan telescope. From uh Cherie Coats, her late husband Thomas used it for almost twenty years. It's optically sound. And uh we're, the idea is to put it on that mount that we have where they currently have the six inch refractor, it's a better scope, I think, for that, so. Uh we also want to, I guess Jim left. Uh we need to get a letter to her of, you know, the rough, rough value of it so that she can take her tax deduction for that. Uh we had a good success at the Dark Skies Festival, unfortunately, not as many people because of the shift in the dates. But fun was had by all and it was, it was a good event. Uh so the only one we have left is the uh Woolly Hollow, we don't have another one at Pinnacle, huh? Okay, well then we'll have to set that up and go from there. All right, any other business that we have, anyone want to bring to the floor? All right, if not, yes. You need a speaker for next month, okay, well, somebody, if you want to talk a little bit, uh give uh Rocky a call. What about you, Bill? You, we're gonna give a little talk about the twenty-four inch uh Dobsonian, did you want to present that? Okay. All right, well, somebody, please, you know, uh contact Rocky if you have something you want to talk about. All right, if there's no other business, I'm going to close the meeting. And uh uh some of us have telescopes out there, so if you want to hang around, we got a clear night for once after we have a, a club meeting, so that's really nice. Right, thank you all for coming and whoever's on Zoom, thank you. We did see the comet tonight, so that's why we got a late start, so I'll just let you know that. All right, bye.